Recording in progress.
Okay, welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting and we're going to have to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the National Anthem.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous night For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
A roll call? Just ask everybody for stand for a quick moment of silence or join Durcan Formas to him at Superintendent Schools where his funeral mass will be held tomorrow at Blessed Sacrament. Thank you. Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. So our first motion is to approve the consent. Agenda, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we are now on public comment. Any member of the public may address the committee regarding any item appearing on the agenda for two minutes. Just give us your name, your item number, city or residence, and you're more than welcome to come up. Then after that, after the public participation, we go to public petitions, which will be our students from Forest Grove Middle School. You might want to put that microphone right in front of you. There you go, perfect.
Hello, I'm Alana Koff. I'm an eighth grader at Burnco Middle School. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, School Committee, and Superintendent for allowing me to share my concerns about the dress code policy tonight. The dress code should be changed because it's outdated, not equitable, and it could cause self-esteem issues, and it's hard to find clothes that pass our dress code. I would like to address the dress code policy that targets female students, the sandal policy and the hat policy. First, the dress code policy that targets female students. Dress code policy teaches women from a young age that their bodies are provocative and should be hidden and shamed. This is an outdated and sexist policy that does not promote self-esteem. Dress code teaches girls that their bodies are objects and are a distraction. The majority of dress code policies only impact women. A national study found, dress code does not seem to have an overall effect on young students' behavior or attendance overall. Sixty-one point six percent of middle schools and fifty-five point nine percent of high schools have gotten rid of dress code policies in the United States. Dress code restricts students from being able to express themselves and can result in self-esteem issues. The assumed purpose of dress code is to ensure students receive education free from distractions, but in doing so, administrators often take students out of class and precious class time is lost due to addressing dress code concerns. It's nearly impossible to purchase clothes that conform to the dress code policy. Clothes that adhere to the policy are hard to find, more expensive to purchase. Many students cannot wear clothes that they and their family purchased for them. The Student Handbook states that students attire and appearance is primarily the responsibility of students and their family. I request that you change the dress code policy to allow midriff shirts straps any size and no penalty if a student is under garment strap can be seen. Second, the hat policy. Recently, the school committee changed their headwear policy to now allow durag scarves, bonnets, and other items that cover students' heads, hair, and neck. Face masks are also allowed, so the argument of being able to see a student's face is no longer relevant. When hats and hoods are still prohibited, this is not an equitable policy. All students should have the option to cover their head and hair if that's what makes them feel more comfortable. When a student feels comfortable, they're able to focus on learning. I request that you allow hats and hoods as this policy is not equitable to students. Third, the sandal and strap policy. The Student Handbook states that no sandals and must wear strap on the back of crocs for safety reasons. If there's ever an emergency situation, I highly doubt the lack of a croc strap would be the reason a student was harmed. The student and their family should decide what's appropriate to wear for school. Thank you so much for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you. You are excellent. Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else want to speak in the public participation? Okay. Andrew, I don't think we have anybody. No. Okay, so we are going to go to the next slide, Public Participation. To consider a petition from two students at Forest Grove Middle School regarding the plastic waste products. You should give us your name and...
Hello, our names are Olivia McKenna, Soraya Davis, and Elizabeth Onision. Today, Marcus Johnson and Dee Dahl were not able to make it, so we are here standing in their place to present our project. The project that we are presenting is overuse of plastic in schools. The problem we're experiencing within our school is an overuse of plastic. We use plastic bottles and utensils at lunch, and the food we receive comes in plastic packaging. Combined, we use a large amount of plastic each week, and since people can no longer use the water fountains, we use plastic water bottles that end up being thrown away, half-drinked, and are non-recyclable. We also spend about forty thousand dollars each school year on water bottles alone. About one million eight hundred thousand dollars is being spent on water bottles in all of Worcester. So how can we fix this problem? First, we can replace plastic with biodegradable utensils. These plastic utensils take up a good portion of the plastic usage in our school, and biodegradable utensils only cost a penny more, which could help reduce the amount of plastic we use. According to deq.nd.gov, essentially, one middle school with an average number of students can create more than thirty thousand pounds of waste in the lunchroom alone. Plastic bottles are the most used in schools. We cannot use the water fountains to fill our own or reuse the water bottles we receive in school. To fix this, we can install water fountains that have the option to supply your water bottle with water to help reduce the number of plastic bottles we use. By cutting down the amount of money we spend on water bottles, we can use that money to improve our extracurricular activities. According to pca.state.mn.us, as a result of the switch to reusable items, these schools prevented six thousand seven hundred twelve pounds trash and expect to save twenty-three thousand dollars over three years. We thank you for your time, and we thank you for listening to our presentation. We hope that you take our words into consideration.
Thank you very much for that. And what I'd like to do, if you want to leave your project here with us, and maybe we can put that in governance, and you can come to a subcommittee meeting if you'd like. And as part of the... Which should it go?
I believe, Mr. Chair, we're referring to the Finance and Operations.
Is that where it's been? Okay. Finance and Operations, we can send that to... Thank you. Yeah, I got you. Thank you very much. Oh, we have a whole group here. Okay. Next, we are on Report of the Superintendent, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Accountability Systems, Part One. Motion to be accepted and filed. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you through the chair. So tonight, the school committee and our public will receive an overview on the current accountability system with the initial data that we have on MCAS. I do want to welcome and thank Dr. Morris, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and Dr. Andrade, our Director of Research and Accountability. They will be sharing with you the initial findings. Again, this is to make sure that the committee understands the accountability system. There have been some changes and where we are with the data. This is Part One of a two-part series, so you'll just get an overview of what this looks like, and then next committee meeting, we're going to break it down by student groups. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Morris.
Good evening. Through the chair. We are pleased to be here tonight to present, co-present. Is it not on?
I think it's on.
Is it on now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Through the chair, and good evening to all. We are pleased to be here tonight to present to you the Report of the Superintendent. I am co-presenting, as Dr. Manara said, with my colleague, Marco Andrade. Tonight will be Part One of a two-part presentation on the accountability system and the MCAS results for the 2022 school year. So as always, we will start with our outcomes. We hope at the end of our presentation, all of you become more familiar with the Mass Accountability System, what's new and what's different this year. We're going to provide a very high overview of the MCAS results. We're going to briefly give you an overview of the 2022 accountability results, and also finally be given an introduction of what is to come, Part Two of our deeper MCAS analysis. So our key takeaways from the Student EA 22 MCAS results, I'd like to start with our opening sentiment. First of all, we'd like to consider the idea that MCAS is one data point. While it's extremely important, a score should never define a student's potential or ability, nor should it provide a generalized opinion of a school. It is one point, while very important, our broad goal as educators is to help provide students with a high-quality education that prepares them for the world and beyond. It is not just about taking tests, but today is about taking tests. So I wanted to start with science. Despite very hard-working educators, students, families, and probably most importantly, our kids, our students, we did not get where we hoped to. Our scores do reflect the state, and in science, we had a marginal increase in grades five and eight. However, we had lower percentages of students meeting and exceeding in bio and physics. It should be noted that this year was the first year for the next-gen assessment for high school in biology and in physics. When we look at ELA, you see the words "we did not improve," and these were extremely disappointing results because, as I mentioned, we all worked very hard last year. But it would be important to mention that these scores echo the compounding and collective impact of the pandemic. And while we weren't where we needed to be in 2019, our scores did not reflect the improvement or the bounce back or the jumps that we hoped to see. And in fact, in some cases, 2022 scores were lower than 2021. Of concern also was our lower-than-usual, and actually historically-low, writing scores. But these were not just unique to Worcester. These scores were unique across the state. And I do want to share that math, we do have, this is a high point for us. We do have some good news. We saw some increases in grades three through eight. It was a bounce back, but again, it was still lower than where we hoped to be, and again, lower than pre-pandemic. But we did make some really successful progress in mathematics. So when we talk about MCAS last year, we have a lot of key takeaways, and we see multi-year effort to rebound. And it's important that we consider this as a multi-year effort, and what does that really mean? It really means that we're going to be having to work very hard to overcome, and this will take a lot of work and a heavy lift to move kids to where they need to be. And it's incredibly important, and our district feels a tremendous sense of urgency around this, as this generation of our students is counting on us to make sure that we get this right. So our district is committed to doing anything and everything we can to ensure that our students have the opportunity to succeed and ensure that their future is secure. When we think about compounding impacts, I know you've read a lot about the pandemic, and the pandemic experience, as you know, is not even. In fact, it was hard for everybody. I don't think anyone in this room would say it was an easy time, but it was even harder for some than others. And we think about compounding impacts. We think of our early learners in the early years of school. They were in remote learning, or in the early years of school when they were learning their foundational skills. They missed a lot of instruction. They missed a lot of time with their friends. They missed a lot of time with their teachers. So these are cumulative impacts that compound over time. We saw that. We recognize that, and we understand that a little bit better now than we did before. The other piece here is attendance implications were huge. So if you think about the opportunity for learning, we missed a lot of hours, days, times, and weeks over the past couple of years. In fact, the past two and a half years have been anything but typical or anything but normal. We had students that were absent due to COVID, due to family emergencies. We had staff members who were absent also due to the same challenges that our families faced in our community. These things do add up, so we had missed chunks of time for learning. And last, and probably as most important, is gaps still persist for specific populations in our communities. There were inequities and gaps, and as we know, the pandemic exasperated inequities in and around education. And so for the future, in Part Two, we will dig into these gaps in a more intentional way. But this slide is just to identify four big things that we took away from what we learned from last year as educators and as we analyzed our own MCAS results. So when we look at this chart, we see accountability percentages. So during one of the most difficult times in my educational career, we have some schools that were found a way to make good improvements, and we wanted to bring that to your attention. So we had twenty schools whose accountability percentage scores were higher than they were in 2019. In fact, eleven of those schools had a five-point game. And we also had three schools, two were elementary and one were middle, that grew above the ten percent threshold. And again, that ten percent threshold is the group of schools that are sustainable improvement schools. So this was an arduous, challenging task. And also, we had nine schools whose accountability percent was ten or less, which is one less than what we had last year. But as we had three leave, we had two new schools drop to the lowest ten percent. So overall, we have nine schools that we're continuing to work with in our sustainable improvement process. And I am going to turn the presentation over to Marco, and he's going to walk you through what accountability means.
Thank you for the introduction, Dr. Morris. I'm going to do an overview of the accountability system in Massachusetts. This slide is just showing you the accountability indicators that are used in the state. You can see that for elementary and middle schools, that there are four key indicators. Achievement and student growth both use MCAS data. English language proficiency uses the Access for L's data, and chronic absenteeism computed from attendance. For our high schools, you'll notice that those same four basic indicators are also present, but there are a couple of additional sets of indicators. A few of them, the four-year graduation rate, the extended engagement rate dropout, these are all considered high school completion indicators, and there's also an advanced coursework indicator. So there are a few more indicators for our high schools that they're held accountable for. I just want to note that the last full accountability determinations were made back in 2019. So that was the last time that we had run all the assessments as they should have been run, and what that means is that for the current rounds, this 2022 accountability determinations, DESI is calling this accountability light. There is still some flexibility. There are some changes, and so it's not a full accountability determination as we had back in 2019, but we're resetting. So basically, they're going to treat this 2022 as a new baseline. So they're going to reset and treat 2022 as the baseline from here on forward. I'm going to spend a little bit of time just highlighting some of the changes that were made to the accountability system and some things that are the same. So what's the same? DESI did identify the lowest-performing schools, as you heard Dr. Morris mention. That's the schools that had an accountability percentile scores lower than ten or less, and this is required by the federal government to do that. The three-to-one ratio of achievement to growth, those are two of the indicators, that was actually maintained. I believe that was introduced back in 2018, and that is something that they stayed with for this administration. As you'll see in the next slide in a little bit more detail, they do use multiple years of data. The most recent year is weighted at sixty percent, and prior years are weighted at forty percent. And there'll be a table that you can see how this looks. And then finally, DESI did publish the data, the accountability percentiles, scale scores. So there's a lot of information that they did publish, and that's available or should be available through the school profiles to the public. So as I mentioned, I just want to take a quick second here to just show the table that reflects the key measures, the accountability indicators, and the weighting and what years of data they're using for this. So you can see that for a few of these in year two, that they're not 2022. That's because with the graduation calculations, those are always delayed, so that's to be expected. But the most recent year is weighted the highest at sixty percent. And they do use forty percent typically the prior year, but because of the pandemic, the interruptions in the assessment schedule, the half-test, I believe it was back in 21, you can see that for achievement, growth, and for chronic absenteeism, that it actually goes back to 2019 as a year one, and is weighting those at forty percent as part of the school's calculations. For 2023, for this current school year, when we do this and have this conversation next year, this table should look more like year one being 2022 and year two would be 2023, with the exception of the graduation indicators. But this is just to reflect that, you know, the state had to take into consideration the most recent data available to do these weighted calculations. So when we're looking at the school performance, it is not just one year's worth of performance data. So what's changed? DESI did not publish the group indicator targets, so they typically have target scores that they publish for the schools. They did not do that this year. As you heard me mention before, they're treating 2022 as a baseline. So they're going to reset on the targets using 2022 as a baseline. We will see those again in 2023 for each of our schools. They also did not assign overall accountability determinations. So while they had to identify the lowest ten percent, which is required by the Fed, you'll not see districts or other schools being classified or identified in any way like that. And finally, one other tweak that was made this past year was to account for the fact that there were such high absences among students due to COVID. Taking that in consideration, when they calculated the chronic absence indicator, instead of using the ten percent threshold, they upped it to twenty percent. So supposedly, for this year only, it'll be at twenty percent. They did report the data as both ten and twenty percent. So this is the percentage of students who have missed ten percent or more of the time of the school year. For this 2022, that threshold's at twenty percent. So students must have missed twenty percent or more of the time to be considered chronically absent. Typically, it is ten percent, and the likelihood is that it'll go back to ten percent in 2023. So again, just was meant to be a quick overview of the accountability system and some of the changes we've had for this year. Now I'd like to spend a few minutes going through kind of a quick, high-level view of the MCAS. As Dr. Morris mentioned, we'll be doing a Part Two where we will dig in a little bit more, but just to give a kind of a little bit of a view of what we were seeing. As mentioned, you know, for the achievement in ELA, across the state, there was a decline. And achievement is, in terms of the percentages that we typically look at, it's students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. We also have growth data here on the right. The growth remained about the same for ELA. I just want to note, just for context, student growth percentiles, those are the SGP's. The state is typically at fifty, and these are all the students in the state, and when they do the calculations, typically, you know, their SGP will be fifty. The range of forty to sixty is considered by the state to be moderate. And a way that you might interpret the score that you're looking at, so if you looked at WPS, which is us, Worcester, grades three to eight ELA, the fifty-one SGP that we just had this past year, you would interpret that as, on average, for our students, fifty, our students performed as well as or better than fifty-one percent of students that they were compared to. And so students are compared to similar students from the prior exam, students that scored like them. So another thing to note when you're looking at the student growth percentiles, a point change, a two-point change is not really meaningful. When you start getting to like a five-point difference or higher, that's when you might start to say, okay, we might have something going on here. But it's just important to note that forty to sixty is that mid-range of moderate, and all the scores you're seeing here, whether it's us or USN, which is the Urban School Network, you know, those scores are all within that range. Obviously, you know, we'd want it to be higher. So going back to the bullets, in terms of math, our achievement and growth, you can see has increased for our students in grades three through eight. It did decline slightly for grade ten. That's about a four-point drop there from 2019. And one other note I just wanted to make was in looking at grades three and eight math in ELA, just in terms of comparing it to the Urban School Network, which our data is in there as well, again, it's not quite that five-point threshold, but you see that for our ELA for the past year, we're about three points higher than other urban schools. And in math, we're about four points. It's slight, but for us, we are seeing that we were higher, and that is notable. This graph here of English Language Arts on the MCAS shows meeting and exceeding. It's showing you years 2019, 2021, and 2022. The takeaway from this is to be able to see that in grades three, four, not so much in five, and six, you can see that the performance slipped from even 2021. And what patterns you're seeing here in the data were reflected across the state. Grade seven and eight, we can see that there was actually a little bit more of a bounce back. But three through eight overall, you can see that it did dip in '22 and for grade ten as well. as well. So we didn't realize the kind of change we were hoping and expecting to see coming back after, you know, after a year of remote instruction and all the missed time. But the fact of the matter is that this is actually, this pattern's been viewed again across the entire state, with a particular impact, I think, at the lower grade levels, which may reflect students who had missed time as they were learning how to read. So there might be, could potentially be an impact from that there. Now, Dr. Morse mentioned at the beginning that there was a bounce back in math, and statewide, there in fact was, it was visible. You can see that grades three through eight, but really pronounced at grades three, four, five, and six. That yellow bar, which by the way is 2022, again, it's 2019, 2021, 2022, you can see that for some of these grades, there was actually a pretty sizable bounce back in terms of the percentage of students who were meeting and exceeding. We didn't quite get back to the 2019 levels, but given, you know, given the challenges coming back, this was, I think, for us, a positive sign and something hopefully we will be building on this year. The last one I wanted to show was for science. You know, it went up about a point for the state and for us, you know, but for the most part, kind of held steady in '22. Again, 2019, 2021, 2022. What I wanted to note is for grade nine, 10, both physics and biology, I just want to draw your attention there for one second. And Marie had mentioned that this past year, we actually used the Next Gen standards. So what you're seeing for 2019 and 2021, those blue bars reflect the legacy assessment in science, in both physics and biology. And by the way, the majority of our students do take biology. What you see with the yellow bar is the new test, the new standards. And so basically, from here on out, when we report this data, we won't be looking at the legacy bars anymore. This is just to give you a sense of like what it had looked like and what it might look like moving forward, or at least with the 2022 data, using the Next Gen standards. And this type of, this pattern you see here is typically what happens when they reset on standards and tighten them up a little bit. So this is actually to be expected. The test has changed, the standards have changed. So I just want to note that as a visual to represent how this has shifted. All right, I'm going to be going back very quickly just to highlight that we, in terms of the accountability percentile scores, we did look at all of our schools by quadrant. And just want to note quickly, we'll go through each of the quadrants, comparison to 2019. So we're looking back at 2019 and what the percentile scores, that was the last time we actually received them, to 2022, where we just started, the state restarted those again. And for the Burnco quadrant, we saw that five schools had higher scores. Again, these are accountability percentiles than they did back in 2019, and five had dropped. The median accountability percentiles were slightly lower. For Doherty, similar, five improved over 2019, seven were a little lower than 2019. For the North quadrant, four were higher than 2019. We had six schools drop from the 2019 score. Again, the median accountability percentiles were just slightly lower here. And our last quadrant to note is South, where we had seven schools higher than they had scored back in 2019, five had gone down, lower than they had scored back then. But the median change here was slightly higher than it was in '22. In terms of the accountability percentiles, you know, we again looked at the schools and noting the kind of top quartile of schools, so the top two quartiles, these are schools that had accountability percentiles of 50% or higher. We had nine schools. Those schools that had five-point gains from 2019, we had identified 11 of our schools that had made that kind of gain, coming back from these past few years. And as Dr. Morse had mentioned, we did have three schools that had achieved a score of 11 or greater, putting them out of the bottom 10%. So just some next steps. As you heard, this was a part one, there'll be a part two. And what you can expect for that second one is that we'll come back and have a little bit of a deeper dive, some more views of the ELA math and science performance. We'll look at some of the subgroup performance as we did last year, just to highlight any gaps. Cohort analysis, I think it's interesting to note that our current, the 10th graders who took this test back in 2022 last year, they last took an MCAS test as seventh graders in 2019. So we want to take a look and just see, you know, from a cohort perspective, if there's anything that's notable in the data and what we might have seen, particularly at the high school level. And of course, we had shown this last year as well, but there are domain scores that are provided to us by DESI. We'll be able to look at those, possible points, things like writing, geometry, et cetera. So we'll queue some of that up as well. And the final thing that we'll spend some time talking about would be the path forward and some of the work that's ongoing this year to address some of the things that you just noted in the data. Now, if you wanted to add anything, Dr. Morse?
Sure. So I'm going to reiterate and mention, it's going to take a lot of work to get us where we need to get, but our district is fully committed to working very hard to ensure that we provide the best education possible for our students. So next slide, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent.
Thank you, team. So as you can see, a lot of work still to be done, a lot of opportunity, you know, and there's some positive outliers that we saw. There's some schools that despite the challenges have grown, want to dig deeper into that and definitely find out what they're doing and replicate. At the last committee meeting, I shared an idea about having an additional division opened up for the district, because everyone's working so hard. I'm visiting classrooms, I'm seeing what's going on. And so the work that's being put in, the time, the sweat that's happening, right? The intellect is not transforming into the outcomes that we want for our scholars. And so first, as a district, we need to get an infrastructure in place where we can start to address some of these needs. And so this is the infrastructure. And I'm going to guide you through it because it can be a lot to look at all at once, all right? So if you'll stay with me here, I'm going to start up at the top with the superintendent, of course, and you'll see some positions that exist and/or are vacancies that I'm going, that I'm repurposing to help support not just the superintendent's office, but the district overall. So there's a job description going forward this evening, a strategic administrative support individual. There had been three clerical supports in the superintendent's office. Currently, there is one. So we're going to repurpose some of that, put that position in place that will help to coordinate the work that happens district-wide in alignment with what happens with our school committee and our standing meetings, our standing committee meetings, and making sure that what the school committee is looking for is starting to transition down into the classroom setting, and that also that what happens in our classrooms and our schools funnels back up to the district to inform that then we can give you some input as well. So having those lines of communication, that position will help to coordinate all of that. The other positions are existing positions, or they are vacancies, an executive administrative assistant, a clerk or receptionist. Our district currently does not have a district receptionist. And so we want to reinstate that, that's a position that we've had in the past, to again, improve communication for the community, for our schools, and just communication overall. Clerk to the school committee that still exists. Now, I'm going to go down to those blue boxes and just read across those. So we've got the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, and then we have the Chief Human Resource Officer. Those are positions that exist already. Deputy Superintendent exists. It's not showing very nicely this for some reason, but then the position that the committee approved, I want to say in July, if not July, it was at the very beginning of August, that's the Chief Community Relations Officer. That's a new position that the committee approved again during the summertime, getting ready to fill that position. The job of that individual, I'll talk about momentarily. The new division that I'm talking about is the Chief Academic Support Officer. That's what I mentioned to the committee last meeting. The job description is on the agenda tonight for approval. The role of the Chief Academic Support Officer is to provide leadership and vision and innovative practices in the area of behavior, wellness, and physical health. So everything outside of the academic side of the classroom setting and the school setting. I'll talk about what's under that momentarily. And then finally, we have the Chief Diversity Officer, and that position already exists. So on this org chart, I'm proposing one additional division that will take all of the responsibilities right now that are sitting under Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, which you can see the amount of people that are already there, and divide it a little bit so that we have clear intentional leadership under Teaching and Learning and someone whose eyes are giving clear intentional leadership around behavioral and academic supports. That's the going across. Now I want to talk about what's, some recommendations I'm also making to help put this infrastructure in place, some of which are simple job title changes. So actually, I want to start with what is in red. So currently, what's in red are positions, red and/or black, are positions that exist in our district. So for example, we have already a Innovative Pathways Program Director. That is a position that is part of the EAW bargaining unit, so it is represented. We have a, we do not have, sorry, so I misspoke. Let me rephrase this. So the red, I want, currently, those positions are, they're kind of this mix of manager and/or director. So in other districts, for example, multilingual director, multilingual manager. In other districts, that's called a director. Same job, same responsibilities. The difference in title starts to align what we are doing with what other districts do in Massachusetts. But it also sends the message that the job of the director is to lead the work, not manage the work. And so want to make sure, and I know that my, the staff is doing that, I want the language to match what they're doing. And so what is in red right now, they are currently manager positions with the exception, this gets a little confusing, so I apologize on this, with the exception of the Innovation Pathways and the Career Tech Education, those are represented positions, and they are directors. They're going to, and so they stay directors. They're just directors who are in the represented arena. In other words, they are part of EAW. But everybody else, they are nonrepresented, and so we're going to change that title. And so they will become directors, or I'm recommending that to the committee for consideration. The next recommendation that I'm making is a creation of an administrative director position, and there's actually one for the committee to approve this evening. So if you move over to the Chief Academic Support Officer side, you see what's in green. There's a job description for the committee to approve tonight or to consider for approval of an administrative director for Positive Youth Development. And the role of this person is going to be leadership and oversight, creating systems and structures, including monitoring of the two specific divisions, departments that already exist in the district, our Office of Social Emotional Learning and our Nursing Services, so that we have a continuum of behavioral and wellness support services that exist in Worcester Public Schools. And so the Positive Youth Development Administrative Director, and the reason for the distinction is because they will supervise two departments. They will lead that work of that wellness task force that I've been talking about since, I think, my second committee meeting, and the need for that, and our community is asking for that as well, as well as our community partners. Our staff is saying we need some clarity around what we're doing in terms of wellness supports for our children. Our youth are saying that we need more. We need someone who is bringing all of that together and moving that work forward. Right now, it would all sit under Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. That's quite a big endeavor for one Assistant Superintendent to take on. And this position very much reflects what exists in other large urbs in Massachusetts. So that is for consideration for the committee this evening, an administrative director of Positive Youth Development. This will also include that, that part or that job will include the work of our discipline processes and our oversight around that. So I'm looking forward to hearing what the committee may have questions about that. The last piece that I want to point out is a change in title of our quadrant managers. So I put that in purple. So the quadrant manager's job is very much to be that bridge between what happens at the district level, which is to implement the work or implement the vision of the school committee, and work with our site principals to actualize that work, right? And then also to bring whatever it is that is happening at the school level back to the district level so that we are improving systems and structures and processes and not creating unintentional barriers. So our quadrant managers have a very high level of responsibility, and so changing their title to be executive directors because they will be overseeing anywhere from 12 to 14 schools each is a recommendation that I'm making. The final piece that I want to, well, there's two parts that I want to finalize. So those are the difference in title changes. Again, just to clarify the amount of responsibility and accountability that these different level of directors have. From there, I want to point out that under the College and Career Readiness, at the next committee meeting, we will be bringing forward a recommendation for a job description that would also be an administrative director. Because you can see under the College and Career Readiness, the amount of different types of readiness programs we want to offer for our children, right? So we have the Innovative Pathway Program. We currently have a director who is part of the represented group that's there right now. We have a vacancy for a Career Technical Education Director that would also be part of this department here that we would like to fill. The Career Technical Education Director is also in a represented group. We do not have a position yet for early college, but we want a director to be part of that. That would be a nonrepresented director. We would bring that forward to the committee. And all of these positions are being funded, either grants that we already have received and/or through our ESER, and then after that, it would be our SOA program, our funding. Finally, College and Career Readiness, we have a liaison that already exists, so that's not a new position. All of that, you can imagine the amount of moving parts, would sit under this administrative director for College and Career Readiness. So that will be a job description we'll be bringing forward for the committee for consideration next committee meeting. Finally, so lots of infrastructure again. Want to go back to the Chief Academic Support Officer, just to make sure that the committee has a good understanding of how this is all going to play out. So anything that supports the academic program is, but is not the academic program, sits under Chief Academic Officer. Administrative Director, Positive Youth Development, Special Education will sit under the Chief Academic Officer. The alternative programs and the oversight on that would sit currently under the Chief Academic Officer. Our athletic programs, family and community engagement, I said year two on that currently, that's under our Chief Diversity Officer. We plan on moving that over to the Academic Support Officer, moving into next school year, and our Parent Information Center. So you may remember at the beginning of the school year, some of the opportunities for growth or the grows that I presented after day four of being, of our schools being open is a need for tightening of our enrollment system and ensuring that we have improved communication with our families. So that would be part of the Chief Academic Support Officer. Finally, I'll close out on this by saying that the Chief Community Relations Officer, you can see the job that that person will be responsible for, media relations, external partnerships, web design, and social media. Those are high-level pieces of the work. There will be a lot more detail involved in that. This is the infrastructure that I am proposing that will help Worcester Public Schools align the hard work that's happening at our schools and at our district office, and most importantly, in our classrooms with our scholars, so that the outcomes actually start to reflect the hard work that's going on. I want to start with getting the right leadership in place, the right structure, and then from there, we can start to then tack into and really dig into what is working for our scholars and what our classroom educators need and our parents. our scholars and what our classroom educators need and our principals need in order to accelerate the outcomes. Next slide. So that's the infrastructure. In addition to the infrastructure, and I'm kind of making a jump here, so I hope you can make this jump with me, that's the infrastructure for Worcester Public Schools. As your new superintendent, it is also part of my work to develop as a new superintendent in the state of Massachusetts. And so I have a, I want to really thank the state of Massachusetts and DESI, because they've set up a new superintendent program so that we thrive. And that program is called NISIP, and I, oh, yes, New Superintendent Induction Program, I forgot to write that in my notes. So what is this program? So it's three-year program, and it's really about ensuring that every new superintendent that comes into Massachusetts has the skills, the savvy, the knowledge to be successful. So just as I'm setting up the district, or I'm recommending that we set up the district in a way that the district thrives, DESI and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has done the same for new superintendents. And so I'm participating in that right now. The next slide, I'm happy to say that I have the benefit of having Dr. Mary Burke as my coach. She is here this evening. So let me just tell you a little bit about Dr. Burke, because I hit the lottery on this one. So she served as the Superintendent of Chelsea Schools for over nine years. Prior to that, she was the Deputy Superintendent there, Assistant Superintendent there, Principal Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Principal and a classroom teacher. Her entire career was in Chelsea, and I think if I remember correctly, she was a student at Chelsea Public Schools as well. So she, that's what she knows. And she is well-respected throughout Massachusetts. She was recognized for her talent and her leadership with a variety of awards that includes the 2019 Massachusetts Association School Committee Thomas Tip O'Neill Award, and in 2017, she was the Massachusetts Superintendent of the Year. So I'm honored to have her as my coach, and she's here this evening if the committee has any questions for her, but she's happy just to be here and to be watching and observing. She will definitely be giving me feedback on how to be an even better superintendent. So with that, I close out this first part of our accountability system. I want to summarize by saying there's a lot of work going on in Worcester Public Schools. We, we did not meet the mark on everything that we wanted to meet in terms of the accountability indicators. We also know that that is not everything. That is a piece of monitoring how our students are doing and how our classroom educators and our principals are reviewing data to ensure that our children are really ready for, to be those future leaders in the city of Worcester. We have, I've shared with you our plan for an infrastructure. Next committee meeting, we will go much deeper around student, student groups, so that you can see where their strengths are and where there's opportunities for growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Al, for that. That was good. Looking forward to part two of this presentation as well. So, Member Mailman?
Thank you. Thank you for the, I usually don't like structure, but you know what? I feel like we really need that structure, so I'm really happy to see that, big, broad, tons of work under all those areas. Couple of questions through the chair for Marco, I think. On slides 16 and 17, let's see if I can find the numbers. The science, the biology that started a new test, so this 2022, 2021 is part of a new test, I forget what you called it, but that test, how did we compare with the rest of the state? So you're, at least I thought I heard that you say, for the prior two years, for 19 and 20, that was an old test. We have some kind of new test for 2021, and I'm wondering how we compared with other, if you know, across the state?
Yeah, this is, it's 2019, 2021, and 2022, as it type-ows. And I would have to go back and take a look to compare the biology specifically, and see what's available for comparison.
And then I just, I just think it's important for transparency, and I don't know if this will come out in our next report, but, and I think for anybody listening or parents watching, you know, you go to that state website, and you can dig, you can look at every single Worcester Public School, and who dropped and who didn't drop, and I just think it's, I appreciate that we're kind of giving the high level here, but part of me thinks that we should say specific schools too. So just something to think about. And again, for people that are listening, I think, if you want to see the specific schools, go, go look at the state website. And then, just clarification on the new people and the new, the, this amazing structure that we have here. So our quadrant managers, once we finally have four quadrant managers, and they're going to be called something different? Why?
You, you asking a question?
Through the chair to the superintendent.
Through the chair, just to confuse things even further, they are going to be called, what I keep saying is quadrant managers soon to be called executive directors. Now, do I believe personally that we're going to keep calling them quadrant managers? Probably.
Okay.
Just because people just believe in that. But we do have all four now, so we're very happy to do that.
And these are, these are really four executive directors?
Correct. And, for the reminder of the committee and anyone listening, these were already budgeted positions. One of them was a, the vacancy that Dr. Morris created in being promoted to the Assistant Superintendent, and another one had been available that hadn't been filled for some time.
Thank you. And one last question, and through the chair to Mary Burke, I guess, is I'm curious how many students or how many new superintendents are in, do you have a cohort of?
Good evening. Yes, Dr. Monares is in Cohort 13, and so, right now, I think we're up to about 15 or 16 in Cohort 13. And I have to confess, I was Cohort 1, way back when.
Oh, all right. Okay, so this is, and is this a newly structured program through the chair?
The new Superintendent Induction Program?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, great.
It's, it's been around for about 13 years now, 12 to 13 years. We first started with Harvard, and we worked through Harvard. It is with a grant that we share, so it's the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and we share it with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in order to, to put the program together. We are connected at the hip for three years, so this is my first year.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I, I feel as if there's something that we haven't necessarily been wrestling with at our level as much as we should be in the past several years, and I appreciate that it being brought back here, that this is actually something that should be brought to our attention. So first of all, thank you for, for the attention on that. I also want to thank both of you, but also in particular, Dr. Morris, for your framing of this conversation, because I think it is one that is crucial for us to frame correctly in terms of makes all the headlines, we see lots of charts, you can look up how your school did, but we don't tend to see that kind of coverage for much else that happens in schools. And I think that that's a mistake. Which leads to my second question, or my second, my second point, I guess, which is, I appreciate the attention to effectively kind of the rest of the accountability system, and also the degree to which we are subject, not only to state, but also to federal law and regulation. I do wonder, through the Chair of the Administration, is it your intent to bring to us as part of the next presentation, that data too? The graduation, the retention, the access to high quality, to whatever it is, the, the, all of the rest of that stuff? Through the chair.
Who's, who's going to answer that?
Sorry, can I clarify? The intention for the next presentation was to dive deeper onto the, into the MCAS specifically.
Just the MCAS?
Yeah. You're asking about the other accountability indicators?
Mm-hmm.
We could, yeah.
And the answer can be, we haven't thought about it, we...
Yeah, the graduation stuff, yeah, okay.
Okay. Because that, it strikes me that that frequently maybe touches a little bit more directly on things that we, as a school committee, can kind of not control, but have influence over, more so than MCAS scores. So, so thank you, that would be useful. Just remind me, I remember that when the department was presenting to the Board of Education, and they were talking about the MCAS scores, part of what they were at pains to emphasize was not only in terms of the 10th grade science, but also just in terms of how the MCAS was given overall, that there was a pretty substantial change between 22 and 21. And I don't remember what the difference was, because the last three years have been a blur. Can someone remind me as to, is something having to do with both who took the test and where they took the test and how they took the test, if I remember correctly, through the Chair of the Administration?
Through the chair, you're exactly right. In, last year, 21, I can't, keep forgetting all the dates, it was a different test. It was half a test, and students did take the test at home. And there is a difference, because in 22, they took a full test. And so there's specific differences. So we are comparing apples and oranges in some way, and we're finding a way to make sense of it all. So you are absolutely correct that it isn't perfect, but it's certainly something we need to always consider when we interpret these results.
Right, okay, thank you.
That 21 and 22 were very different situations.
Great. So I mean, really, it, we would be mistaken if we talked about 22 as being any kind of an anything compared to 21, other than a different situation? Through the chair.
Exactly. We're really looking at 22 as a baseline. It's our new start. But in order to compare where we, where we are, we wanted to look at where we were. And so that is the way the state is also looking at 22 as a baseline. It's the new beginning, but knowing 21 scores, and the fact that in some cases, 22 were lower than 21, it does cause us a lot of pause and concern around what issues our, our students are dealing with and facing. And so that we, as a district and school committee members, we can be all hands on deck, so that we're able to make sure that we do right by our kids, so that we're able to make sure that 23 scores reflect all of the hard work that our superintendent spoke about, which I see every single day. It's, it's not a matter of hard work, it's like putting our heads together to figure out how do we come back, bounce back from this pandemic? And, because we believe that the implications for our, this generation of students is significant, and we want to get this right.
Excellent. And then, just a request, is it possible for us to get the org chart just all by itself? As, okay, because I know I'm going to be looking at it and referring to it. Guilty, by the way, totally have every intention of still referring to them as quadrant managers, and I'm overjoyed therefore. And I also did just want to mention, this is a little bit of a side note, but you did introduce Dr. Burke. Every time that we talk about the Student Opportunity Act, we owe a little debt of thanks to Dr. Burke, because she was the Mass Association of School Superintendents representative on the Foundation Budget Review Commission, and more than once stood arm-in-arm with the Masbo and the MESC representatives in fending off some really incredibly terrible ideas. So we would not be where we were, in part, were it not for Dr. Burke's work. So I want to make sure we credit her with that as well. Thanks.
Anyone else? Member Kamau?
It's more of a statement, but I think, as I look at the numbers, or not the numbers, but just the percentages in terms of like the, the data that were just shown about the writing scores and math and sciences, I think those are important topics that we, as we all know, but I also see that some of the job descriptions that you have here, to align with supporting, especially the ones that support community engagement, I think that's very important, and other high-level positions that will be able to oversee academics and other, I think that will be able to hopefully relieve some of the educators, or, so that the goal or the essence of their hard work can go, you know, can be supportive of students, vice versa, staff supporting, like just, I know, like the quadrant managers or the executive director supporting other within their quadrants. So hopefully, within the next few years, we'll be able to see some changes in these things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I just have a comment. In regards to the, the new positions that you're filling and kind of the reorg, which I, I think we all agree is great, I'm just wondering, at some point, and I know you talked about grants, and some of it was already budgeted, but if there's any implication, at some point, that'll be brought back to the school committee to address if there's anything that needs to be moved around or anything?
To the chair, actually, we'll discuss some of this at the First Quarter Budget Status Report Meeting and Standing Committee next week. So all of it has been accounted for in the first quarter report, and we can get into more detail next week.
Thank you. All set? All right. So, accepting file? Roll call.
Member Clancy? Vice Chair Johnson?
I think she heard, she didn't hear you. Try to, Helen?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't hear you, Helen, yes.
Thank you. Member Kamau?
Yes.
Member Miania?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Merle Callen, hold it?
Yes.
In there, babe.
All right, we will move on to the report of the Standing Committee, Standing Committee on Teach and Learn and Student Supports.
Molly's asked me to report tonight in her absence as Vice Chair. Our committee met on Tuesday, September 13th at 5:30. There was a full committee present, and we had administration, Dr. Moss, Dr. Sipple, Dr. Monares, and C. Magree? Am I saying that wrong? To, and GB 92327 was our first item, about the 14 action steps that have been in front of us as a city for a long time. Chair McCullough made the following motion, that the item be filed. On a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved. GB 1-53, request that the administration collaborate with community agencies, retired teachers, and other groups to study feasibility of establishing summer learning. Member Mailman made the motion to request that the administration provide a report containing number of students who participated in summer early college programs at Quinn-Sig and Worcester State. On a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved. Chair McCullough made the following motion, request that the item be held for a report in October. On a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved. GB 1-312, that the administration explore utilizing virtual tutoring services for students of Worcester Public Schools. Dr. Moss provided updated information on both the one-on-one Ignite and after-school catapult programs. And Chair McCullough made the following motion to request items be held for a report in December to explore tutorial services for secondary students and provide an update. On a roll call of three to nothing, that motion was approved. GB 2145, request administration provide a report about teacher shortages to include teacher absences and indicate resources utilized to cover the classroom. Dr. Moss stated the district continues to have vacancies in special ed, ELS, and other core subjects. The district has hired 56 day-to-day teachers and 59 building substitutes. Chair McCullough made the following motion, request the item be held for a meeting in October. On a roll call of three to nothing, the item was approved. GB 2-150, that the administration provide a report in the form of a chart on all secondary schools specialized programs occurring in each quadrant. GB 2-151, we took these together about the relative ability of a child to get into a specialized program. These items, Member Kamau made the following motion, request that the backup for the item be placed on Worcester Public School website. On a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved. Chair McCullough made the following motion, that the item be filed, and on a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved. Seems like this was a long meeting. GB 2-218, to accept the early college, full college, and expansion, year two, fund code 175 grand from DESI. Dr. Sipple stated the administration will provide information regarding the overall early college programs district-wide at the October Standing Committee meeting. He provided an overview of the grant and stated that the two new positions were added to Claremont, one a focus instructional coach, and the other an early college advisor. Chair McCullough made the motion that the item be held for an update in October. On a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved. On a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved. 2-244, to consider an update of the admissions policy at Worcester Tech and recommend amendments. Dr. Sipple stated the population of students of color, as well as economically disadvantaged students at Worcester Tech, had been in close proportion across the district. Chair McCullough asked for more information regarding the acceptance of twins to Worcester Tech. Chair McCullough made the following motion, request the school committee accept the following amendments to the admissions possibility for Worcester Tech regarding siblings that are in the same grade. And the gist of it was that they would be offered a seat if, if one of the twins was got in. On a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved. Chair McCullough made the following motion, request that the item be held for a meeting in November regarding innovation pathway, and invite school committee student rep Kendra Aneem to the meeting. On a roll call of three to nothing, the motion was approved, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:27.
Thank you. Approve. On a roll call?
Member Clancy? Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Laura's on, she can vote, so just give her one second.
I'll start again. Member Clancy?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connellnowick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
All right. So, we will move on to Student Advisory Committee. Consider input from the school committee's student reps. They are not, are they here? Anyone here today? Is there anyone on? No? Okay. So, we will move on. Approval of grants and other financial items. So, we're looking to approve the following fiscal year payments of $3,234.28 for scholastic- scholastics, $10,385 for mass Audubon, $4,725.93 to a teacher, $6,072.99 to a teacher, $40,818 to the Justice Resource Institute, $1,644 to O'Reilly and Talbot-O'Conne, $2,181 to UniFirst, $1,221 to Granite City Supply, $195 to Desgno electrical contractors, $600 to the WPC passing term control, $170 to senior custodian, $100 to a bus driver, $790 to a transportation and safety and training liaison, $134 to price shopper, $12,194 to Valley Collaborative, and $52,082 to customer computer. All set? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
All right. GB 1-265, response of the administration to the request to explore the use of translation services for full school committee meetings while remote/hybrid meetings continue to be held. We're going to refer this to the Standing Committee on Finance and Operations. Member Nowick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly welcome the item in Finance and Operations, but it seems to me, given that we, that Member McCullough initially filed this in September 24th of 2021, that time is a wasting. And I would make the motion, if it is amenable to administration, for the school committee to approve a pilot in Spanish effective as soon as they can manage it. Through the Chair to Dr. Monares, or whoever in the administration is prepared to speak to.
Superintendent?
We're fine with, with moving forward with this, if it's okay with the committee.
Yeah, that would be great. Okay.
So, I'm going to file-
So, we, we can take the referral if we want to talk about the rest of the other notions, but if, we could also just make the motion tonight to say, start with Spanish as soon as you can do it.
Yes, we're good with that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
I have a question.
No? Sorry, Member Kamara?
Right. So, is it the, to the Chair, is it that if we're getting this translation services, it's going to be Spanish first, or?
Spanish first is what the motion is.
Right. So, I would prefer the other languages too, and not just one language, because other people in this district speak other languages too, that they don't understand English and not Spanish.
Member, Madam Superintendent, sorry.
Then, and we, we agree and we understand, and so, there's a larger fiscal impact. That's why we were thinking, if we were going to move to additional languages, then we would refer to the Finance and Operations to discuss that.
Okay. If we can, I think there's also like, besides Spanish, I think there's a, there's, I think the top three or so?
There's at least top seven.
Seven, right. So, even of that seven, if we can narrow it down to at least three, that's fine, but I don't think it should just be one, because there's other people that I've heard from the district that would like languages, not just English and Spanish.
Okay. So, what, what we will do is, we will, in regards to, at this time, the motion is to approve Spanish to start immediately. So, we're going to take that motion, and we're going to vote on that. And then-
I would like to propose another motion.
Member Kamara?
To the Chair, I am proposing another solution or motion. At least three.
Member Nowick?
Mr. Chair, I just would note to my colleague that effectively what we're doing is we're accepting the administration's backup, administration's recommendation. The administration has outlined, and partly what we're dealing with here is actually that we have responsibilities to the, both the federal and the state government regarding who, what we translate, and which languages we translate into, which is why it's being posed as a pilot, because we, doing things in pieces is not a bad idea when we're tackling something that's new. So, as the, as the backup itself reads, they recommend, the administration would recommend that we begin with Spanish translation first. It outlines the cost, and then it outlines the personnel that we would need. Obviously, any time that we add additional languages, both of those actually go up. And the administration is at some pains to speak at some length about the seven major languages that we translate things into in the Worcester Public Schools, which is why, which is why, of course, administration was actually just initially recommending that it just go to subcommittee without action immediately. The recommendation thus was that we start a pilot and then be able to have further conversation in subcommittee about expanding. No one at all is disputing your point about the number of languages that are spoken in the city of Worcester. I think we all agree heartily about the importance of that. But I think that there's also a, a pretty clear delineation in terms of the population that we serve, and the number of people impacted. I also do think that it's actually really crucial. I, for one, don't want to have to vote down multiple languages this evening, but I think that it is unfair for me, as a member of the committee, to load that onto administration when they have said, here's what we feel like we're able to do now, we'd love to talk more about some of the other stuff, but we think that's going to take more work and more time. I will if I have to. And I also think that it's actually kind of unfair to administration to say that they then have to go pick two more. So, what I would appreciate is if we could move forward with this, again, entirely accepting and agreeing with your point, in part, honestly, because I feel a real level of responsibility to the people who I have seen, among other things, posting on our Facebook comment thread about every single meeting, asking where the Spanish translation is, because that actually is the comment we get about, about every week. So, I would appreciate if we could do those two things, and absolutely, to my colleague's point, take up the rest of the, the question of translation as soon as possible, but again, making sure that we, we walk before we run.
Thank you. Member Mailman?
So, for clarification, if we did not approve this tonight, would it go to Finance and Operations? Okay. Could we approve, so your motion is to approve Spanish only, the item is going to come to Finance and Operations anyways, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I don't know that anybody has this information handy, but in terms of percentages of these other languages in the top three, that, you know, is it 30% Spanish, and then it drops to what? Do we have any sense of that?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the Chair, I don't, I don't have it by memory, I don't know if anybody on the team does. I know that the Spanish is the definite highest percentage, and we can easily find, we, we know that we have the top seven.
We'll get that subcommittee in.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Kamara?
Thank you to the Chair, and I do understand the backups. I, I also understand the fact that we do live in a community where there's the highest Spanish-speaking cultures for which we will go with this, or saying that. However, there are other families in the city of Worcester that have kids in the public schools that may not be on social media, on Facebook, and that use other mechanisms to keep in touch with our meetings and such, that have complained also that their languages should also be included in this. So, while we're not seeing them on social media, on Facebook, we cannot all assume that all members of our community who does speak Spanish are also on social media. So, for that, if either we go back to, we bring this agenda to the FNO, and we look and discuss it, I would prefer that than for us to just leave a huge chunk of members in our community who may not speak English or Spanish. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is still, this is going to Finance and Operations, but we are still going to vote on the motion of-
Of pilot speech.
Pilot, piloting the Spanish-speaking interpreter, starting immediately. Roll.
Right. To the, to the Chair. And I also have a question. So, like, if this is going to go to FNO for the remainder, I'm just kind of trying to calculate, how long is it going to take for it to come back to us, in order for us to approve of, of the other languages that are also important?
I mean, it would go to FNO, I, I don't know how long it, it would take, but it, it's on the backup. They, they, they talked about, they know it's a need, based on the financial implications and, and kind of rolling it out and having interpreters on what that means. It needs to kind of just financially be looked at. So, that's why it was going to FNO, but they're asking that we pilot the Spanish one immediately due to the cost that it is. It's probably a little bit, that's, that's the answer that was kind of given in the backup and kind of what they're explaining.
Okay. So, okay, so, if we are going with this avenue, then we're basically saying that for all the other people that speak other languages?
We're, we're going to vote, we, we, we're not, we, I, I don't think anyone is dismissing. I think we're just going to vote on that part, we're going to send the rest to FNO. And we, we'll take a vote. Roll call.
Point of clarification, when it comes to FNO, it can be on the next agenda for discussion. Isn't that correct? In no, on November's meeting, we could have it on that agenda. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, it's going to Finance and Operations. We are going to vote on the pilot. We're going to take a vote on the pilot? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
I, I will probably wait for it to come to FNO, so.
So, do-
Would you vote?
I'm sorry?
We're, we're voting on whether or not you want to start the Spanish pilot immediately.
I want for, yeah, so, I guess it'll be a no.
No?
Or absent, yeah.
Can't be absent.
You want to abstain?
I want to, thank you.
You want to abstain?
Abstain, yeah, thank you.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connellnowick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
So, moving on to GB 2-1814, response of the administration to request an update on the commu-, update the community on the Worcester Public Schools and COVID.
Thank you, through the Chair. So, tonight, committee, you will hear the additional data points you had requested. As I'm going through it, I can let you, because I'm going to do it verbally, but next committee meeting and moving forward, I will make sure that you get backup on this. It'll be on your, in your, in front of your seats, so you have the most recent data, okay? But you had requested not only to have the number of positive cases by student and staff for the district, but also by quadrant, so I have that data. You had also requested attendance by quadrant and the total attendance for the, the district. So, I'm going to read all that off for you. It's going to be a lot of numbers. Again, next committee meeting, you'll have some, you'll have it all in writing. I don't think you have it all. Do you? I see Sue has something.
We do have-
Okay, great. All right. So, here we go. I'm probably going to, yes. So, I'm going to show, okay, great. So, for the, through the Chair, someone was ahead of me, I'm happy to hear that. So, I'm going to start with the Burncoke Quadrant. The number of positive cases for students was 25. The positive cases for staff was nine. The attendance rate for Burncoke, Burncoke Quadrant is 91.64% during that time period. For Duarte, the number of positive student cases was 22. The staff cases was five. The attendance is 92.09. For the North Quadrant, 11 positive cases for students, 11 for staff, and 91.49 in attendance. For South, 19 students positive, 15 staff members positive, and attendance rate for South was 92.76. So, the total, do we have different numbers? Oh, so, this is as of today, that's why. So, I have more numbers than you do. So, again, next time, I'm going to make sure you have the exact numbers that I'm reading off, okay?
You got it.
So, in total, the total number of students this during, from September 29th through October 6th, is 77 students. The staff is 51, and the attendance rate for the district was 92.04. So, for the most part, we're about the same. There are some, a little bit of pops, but it's by a school versus by a quadrant. Next time, again, you're going to get this in a way that makes it very easy for you to follow, because that was a lot thrown at you all at once. But I welcome any questions that you may have.
Member Nowick?
I actually, I don't, I have a question that I do not expect you to have the answer to, but I'm clarifying, because I, I noticed from the minutes that I was unclear when I asked this last time. I appreciate the student attendance, and I think that's hugely important. I will say that from an operational perspective, that part of what I'm also concerned about is staff attendance. So, how administration chooses to share that with us is, you know, honestly, up to you all. But part of what I'm sort of continually worrying about is, do we actually have enough teachers and bus drivers and people in nutrition and so forth? So, again, I'd be open to however you want to share that, but I, I do think we should probably keep an eye on that as well. Thank you.
Member Mailman?
Thank you. I didn't know if there was a further update on the systems thoughts about COVID vaccinations or flu shots within the school, and could you update us on the thinking right now?
Through the Chair. So, clarifications, Member Mailman, meaning partnership with our county public health and some of that-
Are we going to be providing shots, COVID vaccinations or flu shots in the schools after school for our students, for our faculty?
Thank you. So, the answer is yes. We're working with Department of Public Health, our nursing services, right now. We wanted to be sure that our families had the information to make informed decisions specifically about vaccinations for, for their children. And so, in partnership with the Department of Public Health of Worcester, we're, we're coordinating all of that, and then they will be offered at various times throughout the school day and/or on the weekends. We're still working through those details.
Would you imagine that might happen in the next 30, 45 days?
Dr. Morris, would we say yes? I know we've been working on it. The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Yes. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for an update, and we're going to hold that for another update for next meeting. for next meeting. Okay, let's go. GB 2-40, response to administration to request to provide a list of agreements and/or contracts that the school system has with community organizations. And we have, we have the list in the, we have the list in the backup. Anyone have any questions regarding that?
Member Kamara?
Thank you, because this was my item, I believe, yeah. So my only question is just to inquire about if, when contracts started versus when it ends, and then if we're in periods of, with some organizations or businesses where we are in line to like renew contracts.
What? Madam Superintendent? So you're wondering if she has information on when contracts are ending?
Right. So I guess like a bulk of the reason why this came on the agenda anyways was because there were some organizations that were out of contracts with us or what, yeah. So I, so one question is, what, where are we now in the process of those contracts? And then, like, so physically that?
Yeah, so, so we can, we can bring back where we are with each one and the ending dates. That's what you're asking for, correct?
Right.
Yes, we can do that for you.
And then also, can I also include like what kind of like partnership? Because I was very much interested in understanding, one, like the United Nations associations of Greater Boston, like how are we using them for our school district?
Meaning the purpose of each partnership?
Right.
So we'll add, so we will add a column on the purpose of the partnership and then the timeline by which, when the contract's ending.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? So are we holding this for further information?
Member Novick?
Mr. Chair, I'd suggest that perhaps we send it back to administration with the understanding that it may take administration more than one turnaround to get it back to us.
Got it. All right, so we'll hold this. We're sending it back to administration for more information that member Kamara asked for.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara? Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
Okay. GB 2-240, to consider adoption of the employee social media policy. We are going to send that to the Standing Committee on Governance and Employees. Move on to GB 2-258.
Mr. Chair, I think we need to vote there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty.
All right, GB 2-258, request that the school committee authorize the superintendent to act as its representative to execute all contracts and other legally binding documents in the name or, and on behalf of the school committee. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apparently have not been on a committee when I've seen this before, which I think probably has more to do with my time than others. And so I did have some conversations with administration regarding this, because I wanted to make sure that we were giving the authorization necessary so as not to gum up the works without giving over authority that legally we really ought to ensure we were retaining. And so I would suggest to my colleagues the following language. The school committee authorizes the superintendent to act as its representative to execute all contracts and other legally binding documents necessary for the execution of grants, for contracts, and for legal settlement agreements in the name of and on behalf of the school committee. And that would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any objection and approval? Member Mailman?
Can, maybe we, the rest of us understand a little bit more about the point of this item. I, through the chair.
Mr. Allen? As long as we can sign off on the same things we signed off before, I'm happy. Okay.
Through the chair. At each transition with new superintendent, this is a common item that has been approved by the school committee. Generally, it falls into three categories. The first one, as you know, through our budget process, or when grants become available, the school committee reviews and accepts all of the grants. In particular cases, the entitlement grants that are included in the FY, the budget book, aren't always the final amounts, because sometimes we don't know the final amounts until after the budget is approved. This authority would allow us to accept those grants and then establish the accounts for them. But as you know, we always report to the school committee late summer or in the, no later than the first quarter, report what the actual grant awards were and any adjustments made to balance those. So that's one. Number two, primarily with state and quasi-state agencies, they require us through a notary, say that the board of directors have authorized the superintendent, because it's a blanket form, to execute a contract on behalf of the school district. It's really not applicable to us, but we have to sign it and have it notarized. And so that's another, where we use this form, the clerk of the school committee acknowledges that the vote has been taken and we have it notarized. And then the third one is sometimes in settlement agreements, you authorize a superintendent to sign those settlement agreements on your behalf. Those are the three areas where this vote, including the language of member O'Connell-Novick, which would be acceptable to the administration, would accomplish those three areas.
All set?
So this is a, clarifying, this, this item comes every time we have a new superintendent?
Yes.
And then, through the chair, member Novick's item adds what to this?
She, I'd want to speak for member O'Connell-Novick, but I believe she clarifies, actually, I'll let her recite her amendment.
Adds grants.
So reinforces what we are doing currently? Is that what it does? Or does it change it?
Through the chair to my colleague and with respect to the deputy superintendent. Yes, it effectively, what it does is it adds the specificity that Mr. Allen just outlined for us.
Thank you.
Okay, so everybody's aboard. Member Kamara?
Thank you to the chair. So my only question is that the language that we have right now in this, in our item, was that the same language that was used the last?
Superintendent?
Administration, yeah.
Through the chair, the language that is presented in the item was the exact language used in 2016. We're acceptable to the amended language.
Okay. So like, okay, so it's using 2016, and then was, was that approved as this? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So want to prove it as amended on a roll call?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara? Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Authorize the administration to enter into a lease agreement for up to five years for the replacement of existing school buses. And this is approved on a roll call. Everybody all set?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next is the input from the school committees doing representatives, and I think we're able to make it tonight, so we'll accept and file that. Now the approval of grants and other finance items on 2-257. What's that? Did I miss something?
I think we skipped 2-260 and 2-261, which I think can be combined.
2-60, I don't have that in here. Okay.
We're way down the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Why did you? Oh, I missed the wrong one.
After the lease.
Okay. Oh, notice I have two pages for the same, 2-259. Okay. Request that the administration via report in elementary class sizes and consider taking action if necessary. Refer that to the administration. Member Mailman?
Well, it's to the administration. This item is to the administration for a report.
Okay, so we can refer it to the administration?
Yep.
Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara? Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Request the administration via report with the October 1 enrollment numbers. Member Mailman?
I guess I'm confused. I thought we were getting a report tonight.
I don't know, it looks like you wrote this.
On both of these, or?
You have the, you have the oral report, Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. So the October 1 report is based on your students enrolled in your district as of October 1. We have not yet certified those numbers with the state. As soon as we do, we'll provide that report to you.
Okay, and then the prior item, it's with administration and they'll present a report? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Novick to consider approving amendments to the following MASC policies to include expanded definition of race, to include traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, and protective hair styles. And also, do you want to take 263 together? Is that yours, though?
Not really, but as it reads.
Okay, so we're gonna take Ms. Novick's item, refer that to the Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. And 2-263, consider approval of one of the new MASC policy amendments to the budget, grants, and other items as written. Refer that to the governance committee. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
Sorry. And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next is consider approval of job description for the school culture and climate assistant. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you through the chair. So this position I did not speak about in the org chart, because the org chart was about district level. This is a position we would like to pilot at two of our schools, at a middle school and at a high school. We're calling, it's called a school culture and climate assistant. The intent of this is to help support positive culture and climate at the school, student safety, staff and visitor safety. This position will build positive relationships and help with the enforcement, not the discipline necessarily, but really the, the relationship building between our student body and this, these positions. And we believe that piloting this at both a middle and a high school will give us a good idea if this is a nice intermediary support to our schools for safe school environments. So we're calling this a school culture and climate assistant. They would be part of our EAW, and we're looking for members of our community to serve in these roles.
Okay, perfect. Any questions? Okay. Member Johnson?
Yeah, I just have a question through the chair to the superintendent. Have you identified those schools as of yet?
Actually, we have. We're looking at North High School as one of ours, and then Sullivan Middle School was the other one. Am I correct on that, my memory? Yes, those are the two.
Thank you.
Member Mailman? Same question. Okay. I just want to say, on these jobs, these new jobs and these job descriptions and the previous job recommendations that you've made, I support those. I think it's for the long run, it's gonna make a difference in the Worcester Public Schools, and just have to make sure we work hard to make them work, make them positive. And especially on this school culture and climate assistant, I'm looking forward to how that's done. It's a good test at North High School to see if we can expand to other schools here in the district. Member Kamara?
Thank you to the chair. Yeah, I also definitely agree with you. Just a clarify question. There's also the dean of students. Is that also for both schools, or is it just for North?
So we'll go to, real quick, 2-2-68, consider approval of the job description of dean of students. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Member Kamara. So the dean of students, we're actually only recommending for North at this time. We, we want the, we have, we're aware that there's been some additional needs of support over at the school. So rather than continuing to do more of the same, we want to pilot something different. The dean of student, as the job description reads, is very much about working directly with our students and, and creating that, again, that, that culture of pride and ownership of the school. This person will help support the discipline, but also the restorative work that needs to happen on a regular basis. So we're only recommending the dean of students this year for North High School to start, and then the, the school climate and culture assistance, we want both at North and Sullivan. And the reason we chose a middle school is we want to see how it plays out differently at a middle school compared to a high school. And then we'll, we'll be able to come back to the committee during budget season to make recommend, further recommendations.
Okay. Member Novick?
Thank you. On the dean of students, since my colleague raised it, I had, I think, two questions, very, very specific to the description. On page one, under essential duties and responsibilities, it says collaborate with the director of communications on the production and distribution of the student handbook. I'm not, I'm not clear on why that would be done at the school level. We, our student handbook is a, is district-wide through the chair of administration.
Madam Superintendent?
Point taken on that, Member Novick. I think that would be more specific to anything that has to do specific to that school and maybe some school pride pieces, but not in changing the existing district-wide student handbook.
And then, thank you. And then on page two, under working with students, and I just, I guess I wanted to examine the phraseology here. It says co-lead the student council. And I wonder if we really want to talk about adults leading the student council?
No, we want, we want the student council led by the students and the adults to help facilitate and make sure that that takes place.
I thought maybe a verb would be different. Thank you. And then on page three, under other duties and responsibilities, it says in partnership with the division head and admissions department?
That's a typo. Should say administration.
Thank you.
Okay. So as amended on those, and so I'm gonna take each, where someone has a question, we'll take them all collectively. Consider the approval of the job description of the school culture and climate assistant. Consider the approval of the job description with director of family and community engagement. Any que, you got a question on that? On community engagement?
No, I'm, like, I was, my hand was up and kept going, but I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
So I'm still over at the dean of students.
Yeah.
Because it appears that this role is very, you know, high, high, high level. And for the qualification requirements, it has like MA, DESI licenses as a principal slash assistant principal. So only folks that are in that pool will be able to apply for such a position. Is that like, what requirement is that, is required? So I guess whatever. But I just wanted to raise that.
Okay, thank you. Then we have the approval of the job description of chief academic.
If I could, just, just, so to your point, Member Kamara, we would be willing to, I mean, we're okay, per DESI, we can bring in someone on an emergency license who's willing to get the, the licensure. So it, it's not prohibited. If you don't have it right now and you want to go and earn that, we can also do that.
So like, if, okay, so if, but you still have to be a principal, or have, have had to be?
No, no, no. That's, no, there's, that's what the license is called, but you don't have to have had been a principal. This is actually very much an entry-level administrative position.
Position. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay. Member Novick?
Thank you. And so on the family and community engagement, I did wonder if we wanted to specifically include in the family engagement responsibilities, in some way being the interface, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong here, this may not be the, the position, CPAC, LPAC, and SPAC?
CPAC, LPAC, and SPAC. And then I also, when we were talking about the, the, sort of the org chart, I saw that athletics was under here. I did wonder about other extracurricular activities, and if that actually then also effectively falls under this position or falls under this office, or is some, not this, sorry, it's under the chief academic officer. That's where I wanted to add that. Have you rolled into that one already too, Mr. Chair? Okay. Because I have a question about that one, too.
Which, the next one?
The next one.
Yep, okay, so we're, we're on, okay, chief academic support office?
Yeah, so, and this, this is something that I just personally have a thing about. On page one, serve as a member, about halfway down. Serve as a member of the superintendent's cabin, cabinet. I believe it's review committee agenda items and, and prepare and review materials and reports for the committee. And yes, I'm particular about that, because only Massachusetts has school committees. And I have a couple of things on the next page where I think things are capitalized that probably shouldn't be, but I don't need to spell those out. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Member Mailman?
I apologize. What is the license that the dean of students has to have, or, or get ready to have? A teaching license?
No, it's the, it's the administrative, the principal slash assistant principal license. Correct. That's the entry level, kind of. So it's principal or assistant principal license. So this is very much the equivalent of an assistant principal, just an eye on the school climate and culture.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item is to consider approval of the job description for administrative director, positive youth development. Okay. With the dean of students, approve the, approve the job description for strategic administrative support.
I'm sorry, I had a question on the previous one, Mr. Chair.
They're all open, go ahead.
On page?
Which one are we on?
The positive youth development?
Yep.
On page one, I'm sorry, I was trying to puzzle it out with, with my colleague here. On number three, oversees, supervises, and evaluates homeschool affidavits? I don't know what that is. Through the chair.
Ms. Morris?
The position would essentially oversee the homeschool applications.
Oh, okay. Can we change that word? And I say this as someone who has submitted it. Affidavit sounds very, like we're on different sides of a legal argument, and that isn't, I think that, I don't think that's actually how the document is described either, through the chair. Okay, thank you. And then on... Oh, and what is on number five? Interprets laws, rules, and regulations affecting suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and long-term suspensions, SARB and truancy laws, S-A-R-B? What is, what is that? Through the chair of administration?
Okay, who drew the short straw?
There's absolutely no way that Dr. Monares knows this, so that's not fair for anyone.
Actually, it may be that Dr. Monares threw in a California term that does not exist in Massachusetts. And my team didn't catch it. Think that's what happened.
Okay, and I just want, it was a genuine question.
But to the question, that, what this, this oversight is, is around student attendance?
Yes. That I got. Thank you. And I think that's it, Mr. Chair.
I doubt it. Okay, so we're on dean of students, strategic administrative support. We good there? Okay, so we'll take all those collectively? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next item is from the administration, to authorize administration into a four-year lease agreement for eleven hundred laptops for instructional staff. Guess it's about time we got laptops. So, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Request the administration report on the process by which security guards are assigned to school buildings. Member Novak?
As it reads.
Okay, we'll send that to Standing Committee on Finance and Operations. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next item, we have announcements. We do have Worcester Technical High School playing football at the Polo Park on Sunday. I believe it's at four PM. And we have Hoy Cross playing at four PM on Saturday. And we have Assumption playing at Polo Park, I believe, at noon on Sunday. So, then we also have the Italian Heritage Parade on Shrewsbury Street, which goes off at noon. People are interested in attending, and so it's a busy weekend, so. This one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.